Motion, please, that the agenda for the September sixth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of council be adopted. With the addition of attachment eight letter to the Minister of Transportation to agenda item H one information items. Counselor Moore makes that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Counselor Positioning will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carried. We have no public hearings, but we do have a delegation this evening. Regarding basement flooding concerns presented by Melissa Wetterington and Leanne Richardson. So ladies, if you want to come on up. Don't worry, we don't bite, it's all good.
Okay, so I'm Melissa Weeding. We just moved to Edson in two thousand eighteen. When we bought our house, our house inspector had said our basement was drier than lumber in a lumberyard. That's why we bought it in Old Tiffin. Fast forward to July, two thousand nineteen, we had massive amounts of rain and water started coming up our floor drains. We had about ten inches of water that time, four months to rebuild, everything's fine daddy, no more issues. June twenty-eighth of this year, it was deja vu over again. We had, our first water alarm went off at nine forty P M. So we rushed home, dealt with that, cleaned up, not so bad. Get to bed, the alarm, second alarm was off at twelve twenty and it started coming up again. This time it was coming out of our toilet, our shower downstairs, out of the floor drain. If, at that point, our basement was, it was a loss. I own my own graphics and I do my business in my basement. So my main concern was getting all my equipment, all my product, vinyl, everything up, so it wasn't affected.
You guys can have a seat if you like.
I had phoned the after-hours number at two o'clock that morning. I said, it's not raining, I still see water coming up out of my basement. What's going on? And I was told that there was possibly a sewer is issue. And then that was it. We get mostly rainwater in our basement that comes up of the floor drain. I know Leanne, she lives next door to me, they get mostly rainwater. But then some of the neighbors further down the street, they get more sewer water. Okay, so I kind of put out a call on Facebook so I could have some numbers. I didn't get a huge response. There's about nine that replied to me that flooded in two thousand nineteen, same thing. About ten this year. One lady's told me she hasn't, never had this issue in forty-four years of living in Edson. One gentleman on Tenth Avenue had silt and pine needles and debris coming up his floor drain. And approximately half of those people are losing their insurance coverage or having it reduced. Fortunately, I, I'm not yet, but I don't know how much longer they'll cover us. In two thousand nineteen, the total cost to repair my basement was a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. This year, I don't know what it's cost for the emergency repo. But my rebuild alone is gonna cost ninety thousand dollars, because I have to get new furnaces, a new hot water tank. Okay, and then we did our own research. We found, because we do have backflow valves in our basements, they were tested in two thousand nineteen, they're working perfectly fine.
And everyone that we've talked to had backflow valves in their basements when they flooded, so it's not.
Yeah, and my husband put his foot on the floor drain and it was spraying out all over his foot, so the pressure that was behind it. It, it was pretty intense. So to get these new backflow valves installed, it's her, they're eighteen, eighteen hundred dollars plus installation. But, we went to order them and they're back orders. Just to kind of give us a little more peace of mind and protection so that. Because I don't have a sub pump in my basement, because we don't have, like, we don't get groundwater.
But even a sump pump, like, we had two pumps running to pump water out of our basement when we were flooding. And our water level was still rising, so. I know, we don't have a sump pump, but we had two, like, manual, like, pumps that.
It, it's just kind of frustrating, because, I guess, and then you drive down by Vanny and you could see it coming out of the man way there and. So I guess our main concerns, like, we didn't want to come in yelling and screaming, stopping and throwing a big fit, because that's not gonna get you anywhere. We just want to know where and why, I guess, how rainwater is getting into the sewer system.
Or why it can't handle, like, what's coming in there in our area.
Yes, because we are in Old Tiffin and I had people in New Tiffin as well. I don't know the areas very well, because it's still kind of new.
So if I may, just, everybody here is from your general area?
Yes, within block of our houses.
How can, I guess, how can we fix the problem going forward? You know, I, I understand it's not gonna be fixed overnight, it's gonna take some time. We just, to kind of rectify the problem so we can sleep at night when it rains, knowing our basement's not gonna flood and. When I move my business back to my basement, because I have two small kid, or not small, but two kids at home, my husband works on the road. For me, it's way more feasible to have my business at home, rather than in a store. And if we are able to get these new backflow valves that are electronic, they test themselves, I guess, once a month. There's other municipalities that help kind of cover a portion of the cost. Would the town be willing to help us with the cost of those? Just to, as a little bit of added protection for us, to prevent this going forward, or happening every three years.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We certainly feel for your situation and I, I can only speak for myself. When it rains, I also cringe, because I know that, you know, there's always that possibility, right? So, we'll have to refer administration to get more information. As, as you're aware, these are complex issues when you're dealing with a big sewer system. But I will open the floor for questions. Counsel, any other questions? Counselor Positioning.
This isn't a new problem in our community, that, this is probably the third event. The first one, which was the worst one, was in the early two thousands. The town did at one time allow, up until probably ninety-nine, two thousand. Allowed weeping tiles tie into our sanitary system. At that time, the council of the day decided to not allow that, so that. Moving forward, and the older neighborhoods, you can't reverse those issues, because the houses are already constructed with that kind of a setup. But, they did, it has been changed in the community to try and prevent things like that, so. So that there, there, it's not something we're not aware of, it's only, it used to be the one-on-one hundred year and one-on-one thousand year floods, but we seem to be getting one-on-one hundred years every couple of years, so it's. It's changed a bit. Asphalt and, then, communities do, as we grow, we do have things in place to try and mitigate that kind of stuff, but. Any new building in our community has to have an outside sump, we can't pump it into the systems anymore, so that, that's why you do get overloaded. And it is a challenge, but just, provisions have been made, it's just, you're in an older neighborhood that is. And Tiffin is, was probably the last neighborhood that had sumps that are, weeping tiles that get tied into it. So that would be, that would be New Tiffin, not even Old Tiffin, so New Tiffin had, like, I'm in New Tiffin and my, my system ties into, but we retalize into the sewer. But then I think, I think it was West Grove was the first neighborhood that they stopped allowing it. And then all, any new neighborhood, any new building in the community, or even an infill, has to have it outside the system, so. Some provisions are already in place, it's unfortunate, though, that you'd have to revert a lot of homes to, to change that.
Understandable.
Counselor Sharp?
Okay, thank you for your presentation. So what exactly is your ask to counsel, like we did earlier, so we're looking at your direct ask is to.
We just are kind of, obviously, the town is aware of the, the issue. We're just wondering if there's anything that can be done to help maybe prevent it from happening again. And I, and I understand that with the older houses, it's gonna be harder to not have them tie into the septic system, or just. I guess, looking.
We don't even.
Just looking for some answers from the town, like, what can we do or what can be done to help prevent.
This from happening.
This from happening again, because like, once every twenty years, yeah, I could deal with that, I was flooding once every twenty years, but every three years, it's. We're worried about the value of our houses going down, because it keeps happening.
Who's gonna wanna buy a house that repeatedly floods?
So as, if the town is willing to work with us, with, to come up with a solution on, you know. What we can do on our end and what the town can do on their end to kind of make the problem less or go away even.
Any other questions? Counselor Bar.
Thanks, my question's actually to Counselor Positioning, to the mayor, to Counselor Positioning. So when you say that the weeping tile was going into the sewer system then? Is that just the weeping tile that is around the exterior of the house, or does that include the, the rain gutters off the roofs?
Yes, because you got us, but there are times you can tie your weeping tile, quite a few years, quite a few builds in this period, you can tie your weeping tile. Into your sump, your sump, not to go aside, just sump, straight into sanitary sewer. So in a high, high water event, or long periods of rain, every system's overload the system, so. The, in some neighborhoods, you're likely to get mostly rainwater, so it's still considered a, a black water, so your house is still contaminated, but you. The system can't handle it, it's designed for, our sanitary system is designed for your toilets flushing, your showers running, not a huge influx of water at one time. So. It's, it's, it aligns the system. So if, if you compare the last two events to the first event, a lot of homes were modified after the first event, because it was every other home. Throughout the community, after the big event, I think that was in.
Two thousand five.
Early two thousands.
Two thousand five. Yeah, it was two thousand two, it sounds right. Yeah, it would be two thousand two, because you're a driver of a fire car, so it was two thousand two, and then it was literally every house in town had a pile in their yard.
Those people canoeing down the street.
Yeah, cars floating, you name it, and it was, so after that, a lot of modifications were made to the infrastructure to try and mitigate it. So there is still homes, how, which we're aware, well aware of, but it's not as bad as it was, so quite a bit of money was invested in infrastructure to try and mitigate that. Bottom necks have been repaired, it's just, it's, like, anything else, there's so many dollars to go around. Yeah, we've never been presented with an idea of some kind of a grant system or something to help with backflows, but. Again, that's something we'd have to refer to administration and see if this is feasible.
I do appreciate you coming in with a recommendation or a suggestion on how I assist, because that, that's helpful for us to at least formulate some conversation. Counselor Moore?
Through the mayor to our presenters, thanks for your presentation. You know, we, we got hit by the flood in two thousand nineteen, up on Eleventh Avenue there, and. We didn't have a sump pump before, but we sure have one now, and it's made a great difference, but. We also found out, when everybody came around, when the people came around to look what our problem was. When the house was originally built, the grass was pointing toward the house, was running toward the house. Since then, it's been rectified, now it's going toward the street. So, that'll help in the next event, if there should be a next event. I hope not.
Your, but your, your situation's mostly from the sewer system. All right, well, I do appreciate you taking the time here today. Like we said, we'll refer to administration and hopefully follow up with you in due course. And certainly will be a discussion as we talk of our upcoming budget, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. All right, I'm reading a bylaws. Reports from administration, you're feel free to stay, or if you'd like to exit, you're welcome to as well. Can I get a motion, please, that council accept the automated traffic enforcement report as set out in attachment one for information? Counselor Bevan will make that motion, and we do have a presenter here today. I believe Tyler, are you presenting on this, Christian? Oh, and Al's here. You were in the sea of people, I couldn't see you there, Al.
Hey, first of all, I'd like to thank Mayor and Council for this opportunity to bring this administration report. So whilst we've had this report on our automatic traffic enforcement, or better known as photo radar. So we think it's important to bring you some updated information, especially in light of what changes and problems are instituted over the last couple of years. So we're gonna talk a little bit about the history, some of the philosophy behind automated traffic enforcement. Some of the public safety projects that we've been able to do, some program administration, some stats. And then how the new ATE guidelines are kind of rolling out today, so. But the history, ATE was first introduced in two thousand six in the town of Edson. It was kind of a joint effort between the town and the R C N P, you know, they kind of looked at different options of what to do. And really, it's, if you get into this, the whole presentation, it is a tool used to slow the traffic down in our community. With a main overall focus of public safety. We strongly believe that, right? And we do that by, by having another tool to change the driver behaviors, that's our goal. We want to change the driver behaviors. So they slow down, making our community a lot safer. Back in two thousand six, when we first took on this initiative, the town decided to go down the path of hiring Global Traffic Group for this initiative. They were proven contractor of the service, and it's pretty new to our community, obviously, two thousand six, so that's the direction we went. The benefit of one with global is they did provide many of the aspects of the program right up front. They had all capital purchases they looked after. They looked after all the ticketing processes, including all the core appearances, staffing, etc. They did everything. So basically, we just hired them in two thousand six to carry on with the program and run it for us. Part of the philosophy, yeah, but I've already talked this again, but I'm gonna say, you're gonna hear this a lot. It is a public safety tool to help reduce traffic speeds within our community, right? All revenues generated are used directly to offset, same, like, it's policing. We put all our nine, all of our photo radar funds to offset our C P contract. Back in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, the council of the day had also listed from a presentation from administration about taking ten percent of that fine revenue diverted. And diverted to what's called the Public Safety Initiative Program. And that was to enhance, again, safety within the community, we want to make sure that all of that money was used for public safety. Some of the projects that came out of that, and we're gonna talk about these a little in more detail, are speed advisory signs to see around town, portable and mounted. We did a seventy-two hour emergency kit a couple of years back, and some of the pedestrian crosswalk lights, they're all funded for the Public Safety Initiative. To dive into a little more detail on our public safety projects, I think it's important for people to understand that we're that ten percent of that fine revenue. I just want to step back a sec. It's not only photo radar revenue that funds these, it's all ticketed revenue, so if it's getting conventional, when the R C people, somebody over within the town. Or peace officers, or global, ten percent of that all fine revenue goes towards these type of projects. So we have in our town the speed advisory signs, we have mountain and portable. So we have one portable sign, which can be deployed throughout the town, and we do that regularly. This week, you'll see it mounted at the overpass to slow people down, head note on the east end, but we've had it in Hill and Dale. Anytime we have a public concern, it comes up that there's a real concern with speeding, we need to get that. How we capture that data is using the portable monitor, and that speed monitor will give us many, many types of information. It'll give us the speeds that are happening, it gives traffic count, gives us a high speed and average speeds, there's a lot of data that that portable unit can give us. We also have seven permanent mountain signs throughout the community as strategic locations. Again, same thing, those permanent ones, as you see on the picture up there. Will not only advise the people of the speech for them to slow down, it will flash once they get to a certain threshold. But it also collects a lot of data for us, it'll give us traffic counts, it'll give us the high speed, the low speed, the average speed throughout the community, throughout the, that is being monitored. Another public safety project is the playground and school harmonization zone project, which we're just wrapped up this summer. That was funded, all the installation of the signs through the Public Safety Initiative. And a couple of years back, we also did pedestrian light and crosswalks locations, six locations throughout the town. Again, public safety, that's what we're focusing on, public safety. Like I did mention, we did do the seventy-two hour emergency kits for the community, and that was a partnership with Citizens on Patrol, they've seen a lot of value in giving, providing these kits. I believe we, because it provided three hundred kits throughout the community on a first come, first served basis, and it was a very successful. And also, in their twenty twenty-two capital project for the pedestrian crossing lights, fourth and forty-six, I believe, was funded, this project as well, from the Public Safety Initiative. So there are some really good public safety projects that come out of this funding. We talked a little bit now about program administration and the role that everybody has in program administration. So overall, we want to talk about is the R C N P. The R C N P are the police of jurisdiction, but for us, that's R C N P, provide overall program direction. They ensure enforcement is conducted in accordance with the traffic safety plan, which we do regularly, I believe it's a three-year plan. And we, and we identified that photo enforcement is one of the tools that we employ to do that. R C N P are responsible to review and approve all the site locations within our community, they have to be approved. Like, the contractor cannot just randomly set up, they have to be on an approved site. They set the periods of operations. They provide data analysis to the town when we need, and they respond to public concerns in collaboration with the town as well. So we take a lot of complaints with sort of, and we kind of got track those. The role of the town, and again, this is in collaboration with the R C N P, is to identify and provide data to your C P to support the traffic safety plans. Again, we work in close proximity with the R C P to do this. Compile information to support the site assessments for the R C N P, provide A T information on our town website. We hire the peace officers, as per the Peace Officer Act, this is kind of complex, and we'll talk a little bit about that a little later. And we also respond to public complaints and questions. This is a snapshot, there are other admin tasks that municipalities, some municipalities are responsible for. If you're conducting A T in a house, we don't do that, we have global, we pick up a lot of those other. What is the role of our contractor? And again, this is in collaboration with the town and the R C N P. They provide all the equipment, technology, and training for the operators. They provide tech advice on equipment, they provide transportation safety data, including traffic volume for locations to support the program evaluation. And they do this annually, they'll, they'll set up traffic counters on all our approved zones as well, collect more data for us. And they provide that, that analysis services to the town and the R C N P. That is also posted on our website, if you go on the site there, you pull up all that information right off our website. Other roles of the contract, provide individuals who could be hired by the town, as per the Police Officer Act, this is kind of a unique scenario. Contractors of automated traffic enforcement have to have the town hire the peace officer, so there are employees. But they completely look after them, and that's the way the Peace Officer Act is set up for the soldier. So they're responsible for paying them benefits, every, who can, anything to do with that. But the technicality of the soldier is we have to hire them as our employees. It's, it's, it's complex. They process and manage notices to offending registered owners, so again, contractor does deals with all that. They manage to conduct inspections, testing, and certification, recertification of the equipment that are used and all the technologies. And they have to make sure that the individuals conducting testing are to be qualified and certified by the Minister of Soul, Minister of Justice and the soldier. So a little bit more program administration, contract service providers are prohibited from setting program direction. We've got to be clear on that, so, so our contractor does not set the program, they don't set the direction. Program direction is provided by the police of jurisdiction, in our case, that is the R C N P. The R C N P in the town are ultimately responsible, assuring the contract service provider it hears all the approved titles as well. Talk a little bit about stats, we always get this question with our complaints, where does the money for photo radar go? Regardless of whether a traffic ticket is issued through conventional enforcement or photo enforcement, the revenue is split between the province and the town of Edson. Or, or the town where the ticket is issued. I'll give you an example, I'll use a hundred dollars, it's simple, so a hundred dollar traffic ticket will have a twenty dollar provincial surcharge automatically applied, and that's for the victims of crime. Bringing the actual ticket to a hundred and twenty. Now, of the original hundred dollar ticket, the province retains forty percent, leaving the town with sixty percent. Again, where does the money go? So I kind of broke it down a little more. The town's portion, our sixty percent is then split between the contractor and the town, with approximately fifty-five percent to the contractor. Forty-five percent to the town, and that's based on a funding formula within their assigned agreement. So the original hundred dollar ticket adds twenty dollars to the victims of crime. Province takes forty dollars, contractor takes thirty-three dollars, the town receives twenty-seven dollars. And that helps us, again, we've always said, of the twenty-seven dollars of the hundred dollar ticket. One hundred percent, other than ten percent, goes to offseting our costs for providing policing with our community. Here are some of the stats, tickets issued over the last five years. Very, really trending up, twenty nineteen was a bit of a blip here, and there's reasons for that, we had some challenges with, with operators and stuff, so. And we rectified that with our contractor, but again, over the last five years, continually growing the tickets. So there are a lot of tickets issued with our community. By new revenue from automated traffic enforcement, this is just automated traffic enforcement, again, it's kind of broke down. How much is paid to the province, this is the purple, how much is paid to our contractor, the blue, and how much the town retains in the green. This stat, I think, is really important to understand, it's five-year resident versus non-resident, people getting the tickets. And again, typically, we are seeing ninety percent of the tickets issued are non-residents. About eight to ten percent are municipal residents, we're getting the tickets, and that has been very, very steady. So municipality is, your residents of your town are less than ten percent of the overall photo radar checks that are happening in your community. I just wanted to include this slide, we talked a little bit earlier about the speed advisor signs that we have posted around there. This is data taken, this is for July of this year, by the way. This is a speed advisor on sixty-third street. And if you really take a good look at it, again, it gives you the vehicle count, right? Our tolerated, our, our posted speed limit is fifty on there. What we have is tolerated speed, that's when the light will start flashing, we think that's a good, if you're doing fifty-seven, the light will start to flash, tell you to slow down, right? And it collects all this data, so the number of speed violations on any particular, if you take a look at it, are high, right? Though the number of vehicles respecting the limit are a little lower, but the number of vehicles inside the tolerated range, which is that fifty to fifty-seven. Is a good number to include as well, right, so you know, the two hundred and fifty-five on the first of July. Were between fifty and fifty-seven, and that's a part of the number of the six hundred and thirty. The scary part when you look at this is some of the maximum speed limits on that. This is on sixty-third street, coming down by the creek. Some of these maximum speeds are scary, so they are flying down, there's some of the people. We have seen.
That is during a time when people are walking on the trails.
And it does flag the times.
Yeah.
We have seen higher speed limits in other areas than our communities, I'm just trying to give you this snapshot. This is the data that those speed advisors captured for us, they. Twenty-four, they capture all this data, so it's great data that we have, so we just want to make sure we share that. The new A T E guidelines, everybody knows for the last two years, the province has put all photo enforcement programs on hold, but they did their annual review. But that review is now completed, but the new guidelines actually came into effect, it started in twenty twenty-two. This gave you kind of a breakdown of what twenty twenty-two, what municipality and we've got to deal with. It's a basic approach in the commence January first. Transition zones were well-defined, starting April first, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. There's a new format for reporting, and municipalities are bound by that, started April thirty-first, and some of that includes collision data that we have to give the R C P to provide. A new zone criteria was adopted on June first, so any new zone that we want to apply for has to follow the new criteria effective June first. And full implementation, including vehicle signage, December first of twenty twenty-two this year. So we're gonna, we're gonna expand on these just a little bit more. So, guiding principles, again, under the guiding principles of the new guidelines. Transportation safety must be the primary objective, and that has always been our objective when we went with photo radar from day one. The police service in collaboration with municipalities are accountable for ensuring A T programs are used to improve traffic transportation safety. Again, something we've taken from day one, so not new for us. Ongoing evaluation of the program to ensure the improved transportation safety outcomes. Again, as an organization, we've always been doing that, we always consider that. And public transparency is paramount for this successfully in the A T program, and we're very transparent. We, we post on our website quite regularly, and this type of presentation is another way to get that message out, we want to be transparent with it. Some of the transition zones, it's good to know, because we always get that question, oh, they were set up there. So anytime there is a ten kilometer speed change, for example, a fifty to a forty, it's gotta be ten years either side of that original sign, twenty minutes a total. Twenty-hour speed change, from a hundred to an eighty, it's gotta be twenty-five meters of each side, part of the sign, but the first sign, which is fifty meters in total. And the thirty kilometer speed. And the thirty kilometer speed change is 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 a hundred meters on each side, but a hundred meters is not long when you do. So when they see the unit located in some of the areas of the city during a transition zone, they're nowhere near in a transition zone. We're very careful when we do our zone justifications that we take that into consideration. Counselor position.
Yeah, through the chair. Um. All your references are from a higher speed to a lower speed. Does the same apply going from a lower to a higher speed?
Either direction. So here's here's on this picture, for example, it shows either way going.
Okay.
Uh location criteria. This is very, this is critical. This is part of the new guidelines as all locations or automated enforcement is to be used shall be approved by the police of jurisdiction for S S R C M P. This is for new ones. So at least one other transportation safety tool has been tried to change driver behavior. It was unsuccessful. When we refer to transportation safety tools as part of the criteria that we have to show that we've done this. It can it include engineering, it can include education, and it can include uh enforcement, conventional enforcement. We have to show that we've demonstrated that we've tried that if we have this. Is it all possible? So when we talk about the engineering controls that we talked about just a minute ago, some of those changes could include traffic signal timing, right? Changing lights. We've installed satellites, so that's going to come into play for us. Uh we have the ability to change speed limits, traffic calming devices like speed bumps. Second and fourth, don't really need that. Or redesign of the road. And again.
They're ready, they're ready there to justify that.
And again, redesign the road, you know, that rules may not just be practical. Talk about education activities include science informing drives of their speeds, and we are doing that. We putting the speed advisor signs out, so we are demonstrating we have the ability to do that and advertising. Uh again, conventional enforcement activities can be enforcement blitzes or increased presence on the road. And again, we're always looking at those options to do that. Also in the location criteria, each location shall meet at least one of these following new things. Got to have a high frequency of collisions, high frequency of speeding. High frequency of intersection contraventions, and that's if you're going to go to a stop sign or a red light type of enforcement, which we don't do. Or designated zone, school playground. They're the easy ones. They're the automatic. This is kind of an open view map of where all our current locations are throughout our community, and I'll break it down a little bit more detail here. Uh these are most of our school zones, playground zones, both the community. You'll notice there's a couple of numbers in each one. Uh and some of the new guys, we're going to work with with our contractor is to try and tighten that up, so we don't need a north and a south bound. It kind of allows us to do one zone, one justification sheet. But that's something staff sorry to myself to work on with with our contractor to kind of screen on that process. Uh this is the highway sixteen coming in from Edmonton. We have the old pass saying uh on the eastbound, we have the westbound just on the other side, the westbound also coming in uh just west of twenty-fifth street. Uh these are the ones also on second and fourth that have that are, you know, again, they're approved zones right now. Uh public awareness and transparency, the key element in any enforcement practice is public awareness and transparency, and and the new guidelines are really clear on this. New guidelines address this with the following items. Again, highway signage, which is mandatory, mobile vehicle identification. New zone familiarization and public information. We'll just dig down with those a little bit more. So highway signage, permanent signs will be posted on any primary highway entering the town, alerting public that traffic enforcement is used, photo enforcement is used as a tool. We've always had that. We have that. So every street coming into the town has that signage. We've done that. Uh areas monitored by A T shall have permanent signs along the road in both directions, and we've got that. That's always been a requirement. And intersection devices require signage from all directions. Again, we don't do intersection devices. Mobile vehicle signage is new. All mobile units must be clearly identifiable by the public. So the units shall be wrapped yellow with blue wording, drive safe. Or an option they've given the municipalities is with two bright yellow signs with blue words, drive safe placed at the front and the back of the unit. So you can do this, like City of Edmonton does, or you can have a big sign at the front and the back of the unit, the same thing. And if you want to come up with an alternative, uh you can reach out to the soldier if you have an alternative to do that. Uh new location familiarization part, implementing any new location. Right? There must be a minimum four-week communication period. Again, advertise it to local media, advertising on the municipal police websites. Advertise on social media to provide into the program, website to five-one-one and familiarization period will warrant iteration. So beginning. If we're going to institute a new zone in our community, we have to follow this criteria as laid over in the new new guidelines. Uh public information, A T information shall be posted on the town or R C P website as required. And at least monthly, the minimum information shall be A T location assessment forms, which we have currently. Location of each approved site, which we have, and current annual public report, which we have. So we've got all those criteria. One thing that did drop out of this is the dating sites. And I still think it's good to have, and that's something we can add to contract. Right now, we post on there the monthly schedule where they're going to be at roughly for the locations. That's not a new requirement now. So we we can choose to do that or not choose to do that. Overall, our goal is to provide a safer community. Automated traffic enforcement is a tool identified in our traffic safety plan to help reduce speeds by changing driver behavior, and it does work. Um some of the other considerations as we wrap this up is again, some permanent speed advisors potentially on second and fourth app. Unfortunately, second and fourth app are controlled by the border transportation, and the current system does not allow us to put permanent ones. We can put them up temporarily like we do right now on a thirty-day permit, then we have to regroup. Additional pedestrian crosswalk lights on the highways. Again, we're looking at fourth and forty-six. It's not really related to automated traffic enforcement, but it is related to public safety. Right? Um it is a challenge, especially crossing fourth lab in our community. Uh again, keep that in mind. And we talked about some initiatives. We have the public safety initiative fund set up for these type of things. And other improvements along the highways, maybe some improved sidewalks for pedestrian safety as well. Take a good look at the overall layout of what are our sidewalks looking? Are they conducive for good pedestrian safety and pedestrian transportation? No. I just want to put that a little bit. Again, you do have some funds. That's the presentation, and I'll lend to any questions. Thank you, Al, for your presentation, and go ahead, Counselor Moore.
Uh to the mayor through uh to through to Al, I have two questions, actually. They're fairly short. Uh the eight, is that totally A I, or do we have a person sitting in the cab every once in a while or all the time?
Say that again.
Is that totally automated? Is there an operator sitting within the vehicle or?
Yes, the current, the current way we do traffic enforcement is an operator sits in his vehicle or her vehicle. And they they have the camera, they take the information, they take the picture, they go down.
Right. Okay, thanks. And uh this is a what-if scenario. Uh if the photographs a driver going the wrong way on the one way is, is that a no-no under photo radar?
Photo radar only enforces speed violation, but they can link up with the R C M P if they see something else.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Moore.
Thanks. After the chair to Al, I thank you for your presentation. Um I, it was an interesting map of all the photo radar in your community. I didn't realize we had that many along second and fourth app, so. Um good to note. Um one that I have had a few people asking about is one by, um it's just on the, well, I'm not sure, but it's still there. It's not on the map. Um just east of Wilmore Park, kind of across from Freedom Power Sports. Is that one still active?
Yeah, that's the, that's the one on fifty-eight street. It's kind of fifty-eight, fifty-nine street by the Canadian Tire.
Oh, okay.
That is an approval. Thank you, Counselor Sharp.
Thank you, uh through the mayor to Al. Um my question is, is do we have, you may have, you know, they'll answer it. The province gets a million dollars a year from us. Where does that money go? Do we have an answer for that? Because I see him.
That's a question, serious question I have.
We were. Um understanding, uh I can ask part of that question. Um the processing of the tickets through the crown is done by the crown, just through the province. So I'm I'm sure some of that money goes to help offset some of those costs. So when when we deal with the ticket, the provincial tickets, right, the crown processes those tickets for us. There's a lot of processing fees. Charges are.
Is there any way to find out where that money goes?
Um.
So it's a general revenue.
Any other questions?
No, the presentation was great.
Uh just a few items. Um. So the province went and used to only take twenty-seven percent, I believe, and now it's forty percent. Right. And as your graph shows, can you bring that up again? Can I? We're generating one point four million dollars for the provincial government, and then they complain about the municipality having photo radar.
Isn't that an understatement, really?
And so the town of Edson is actually getting the smallest uh share of that pie. Uh we can get a bigger share of that pie if we did not have a contracted service. Is that correct? We'd be able to take that entire zeros contracted amount. Just go that way.
Yeah. I'm not.
I will have some help in my right. Uh so while we're waiting for that, uh sixty-third street, we currently don't have a zone there, but obviously we have a big speeding issue. Um I've seen peace officers doing enforcement there. How has that been going? With the data. With the speed advisor signs that we have in the portable one, what it does, it sets the framework for the R C P in the town to take a good look at those. Right? Let's take a look at that. Let's see. Again, we have to meet some of the criteria of rationalizing to the province for a new zone. Have we tried this? Have we tried that? Our speed data signs are part of that criteria. And we have to determine if photo radar is the right solution to reduce those speeds. And that's a conversation that between the R C P and the town will have. Sixty-third, one of them is forty street, one of them is edge and drive on those. There are a few of the areas that we have these, these speed data things that are picking you up, and there are alarming numbers uh what we see there, so. Yeah, so it's just over one point four million last year to the province.
Yeah.
The town of Edson, uh what, just over six hundred thousand? Six fifty. Uh Counselor Sharp.
Go through the chairs. Was there at one time they had, you could set up photo radar on sixty-third?
So this news. Has it's not been an approved zone that I can see for a very long time. Um that has to be an approved zone, and it's not been, not since I've taken the program over.
Well, because that's where, if I have a framed picture of my truck speeding the sixty-third and sixty-one, I would wait that three times.
Maybe thirteen that, thirteen that is. Um heading up to sixty-third.
Okay, that may be why the guys would say maybe sixty-third, and I agree, it's very busy.
Is there any other criminal acts that you like to? I'm making notes. So that's the beauty of doing review. I mean, staff starts on annual review, but look at the stats, make those determinations, which zones are effective and which ones aren't, and then make those recommendations.
Sixty-third street and Ford Street would be ideal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the near future.
I don't live near the worst. Go ahead and put one there.
Uh. Through that staff sergeant Delisle, uh do you find photo radar an important tool in curbing speeding? And uh um I know that we get a lot of uh feedback regarding the overpass. And I, the way I understand, it's not a good place to do conventional enforcement, just due to the situation with multiple lanes, that correct?
Yeah, that that is correct. Um is it an efficient tool, uh um a needed tool for the town of Edson? Absolutely. Um highway sixteen corridor going through the town would be very difficult to police on a regular basis due to the volume of traffic. Uh we'd have to have members there on a regular basis to be able to maintain uh safe speeds. Uh therefore, photo radar is doing a great job at doing this. Um I honestly cannot see how this road will be safe without it, without any type of regular enforcement. Uh the overpass is a difficult location to uh do any type of enforcement, just by the way the road is designed. Uh and we're coming, so people coming, uh you know, going westbound, they're coming from a hundred and ten kilometer per hour zone, going up to eighty, and then approaching the overpass. Uh that is a curve. Uh certainly a location that we would like to see, uh people reminded to slow down. Yes, there was some collision. There was one actually not that far uh from the overpass just last week, so it is, it is, it is a risk area.
All right. Uh any other questions, comments, concerns, counsel tales?
Uh through mayor to to strap. Thank you. Very thorough presentation. The only question I had, um it came from residents, is about just identifying the truck, and I I see that they want to wrap it in yellow or put a sign up. If you haven't noticed, or is that change already? Has it been assigned or they're wrapping it in yellow on your sign?
That has to be done by December first of this year.
Have they decided?
Um we've had some conversations as the contractor. Um so the last conversation we had, the contractor suggested um having those sandwich boards in front and behind the truck. Uh I think the reason being is that having the yellow truck, because the the the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the operators are residing in the community and their vehicles are being parked in the community. So having this yellow truck being parked somewhere might bring attention at the wrong time. I suspect that's the main reason. So but certainly something we can talk about with them. Uh but uh yeah.
They are certain. They have one vehicle or multiple?
I've seen uh more than once. I want to say two or three.
Oh.
There's a difference. Yes.
Four.
Um any other questions, comments or concerns? Um this would be probably more for Counselor Facichney, who was, I think you were on council time. This was brought in. Um my understanding is that's how we got additional R C P officers, because we brought in this program, correct? So uh if we look to, and this is the argument I think we always have with people, is if you don't want photo radar anymore, what would we be looking at for less officers probably?
The um thing I never look at is percentages aren't there, but our percentage is is direct revenue. We don't have any expenses in that percentage. Or global has expenses in there. And the province has, because I know the original breakdown, needs to break down how much went to the social generals office and the crown's office. So there is expenses in all the other percentages, so ours is strictly a revenue to this community. Um I think in, if people remember, before we had it, you couldn't cross our highway or something. In a traffic or a pedestrian, because people are going seventy, eighty through town. There is no consistency in our traffic. Um and we saw a huge decrease the first couple of years of having it. It was off-the-charts revenue because it was so bad. Um but we're now like Devon and like other communities in story plan, we're known as a community that has it. And people slow down because of it. So I, I, people can argue it's a cash cow, and and that that that's a huge benefit to this community is that it's a cash portion, which we we directly put back into policing. So um and if you look at the percentages, we've always been under, the highest I think we ever had in that I can remember is about twelve percent locals getting the tickets. So um if locals are complaining about it, it's only individuals who have a heavy foot. Um I have paid one, two in this town, so. Um like Counselor Shinhart, I've gotten caught, but uh I I knew both times I was alone, so. I deserve this.
So go ahead.
Another statistic that was on the presentation is they are currently spending seventy-four percent of their time on the fourth and second avenue and twenty-six in other areas of the community, so they're definitely not targeting like that Edson people. They're in locations where we know that there's uh, you know, potential traffic safety issues. And like you mentioned, like fourth avenue and second avenue would be a racetrack if it happened there.
Sure. My question to the mayor too, but. Well, gentlemen, um schools zones just started again today, and um I'm not sure if they're in the school zones right now, but it'd be nice to have the first signs of the tracks and any police enforcement in our school zones to remind people that there are, there are playgrounds, I know we've been doing awareness, but schools are back in, the kids are on the streets, so. I'm not sure if there's any plans or not, but the spot since you're both here, just throw a date for our community that we should have uh step up a little bit.
One thing we'll do from our side of enforcement is we can make, definitely have our peace officer up a little bit more. Uh in the, we know there are. Schools are active again. Uh global will be back in school zones, expect them this week as well. Um they're set up ready to go. Well, they probably won't have a sandwich, but just I don't like to set up that, but they will be definitely out there.
I can see for the R C P since August twenty-ninth, we've been slowly going back, even though school have not started. Pulling over vehicle, reminding them that they're not school zones anymore. They're playground zones from seven thirty to nine. So uh we can guess since since it was, so we are present.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh just one comment I'll leave you before we wrap this up. Um I have noticed that on fourth avenue, and this is something that hopefully either through um our operations people yourself, Al. Uh the meeting can be in contact with our transportation, is we do lack fifty kilometer signs on fourth uh as compared to second avenue. I think on second, I counted eighteen fifty kilometer hours on signs. And I think on fourth, it was something like four or five. Um so um I think as we talk about transparency, I think it's important to have additional signage, and I think especially when you come into town on the east end. It, I think there's only one or two signs right at the beginning of town, and that is it for.
It, I think there's only one or two signs right at the beginning of town, and that is it for the fifty kilometer hour zones. So I don't know, they might have been removed, hit by cars, whatever, and it will replace. So. Um so I can note that down and contact our transportation. I think that'd be helpful. Thank you for your presentation. Can I get a motion, please, that counsel proclaim the week of September nineteenth, twenty fifth, twenty twenty two is rail safety week in the town of Edson?
Oh, is it possible to take a five minute recess but having technical difficulties?
Sure, right after we pass this motion. Okay. Uh all those in favor? Motion carried and we will take a five minute recess.